Could I have your attention, please? At this time, place all electronic devices, all electronic devices to vibrate. Madam Majority Leader.
Present. Present.
Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Present.
Joseph.
Present.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Mar Marado.
Present.
Marte.
Present.
Mealy. Menon.
Here.
Moya.
Here.
Narcisse.
Aye. Sorry.
That counts, but thank you.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Thank you, Councilmember. Nurse. Jose.
Present.
Palladino.
Here.
Powers. Wrestler.
Here.
Riley.
Present.
Rivera.
Present.
Salam.
Present.
Salamanca.
Present.
Sanchez. Stevens.
Present, my apologies. Here, Stevens.
Thank you, Councilmember Stevens. Councilmember Sanchez.
Present.
Thank you. Ung.
Present.
Thank you. Ung.
Present.
Williams.
I'm here.
One.
Present.
Juwan.
Here.
Ariola.
Queen.
Farias.
Present.
Speaker Adams.
Present.
Thank you. We will now have today's invocation, which will be delivered by Very Reverend Thomas F. Vasalodhi, Administrator of St. Francis of Assisi in St. Blaise Parish, located at 319 Maple Street in Brooklyn.
All rise. Lord God, it is our inevitable privilege and great responsibility of this council to serve the peoples of the city of New York. We rightly call New York the greatest city on earth, and why? Because no other city can claim so great a diversity so as to represent all the peoples on earth. As they begin their deliberations, fill these representatives with the spirit of your wisdom and justice to seek the common good of all, especially the poor and most vulnerable. May they further the safety, well-being, and prosperity of all who live in this great city. Give them a spirit of humility so that they may collaborate peaceably and productively with one another. I ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Nice and short, thank you. I got you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmembers. Thank you. I'd now like to ask Councilmember Rita Joseph to spread the invocation on the record.
I make a motion to spread today's invocation on the record. Thank you, Majority Leader. It is my great joy and honor to welcome Father Thomas Vasalodhi from St. Francis of Assisi's Parish from my district in Prospect Lefferts Garden to deliver today's invocation, nice and sweet, right, guys? Father Vasalodhi has been a devoted servant to the Diocese of Brooklyn since his ordination in 2007. Over the years, he has touched countless lives through his ministry, serving years as a pastor of Divine Mercy Parish and previously sent Agatha, Regina, Pasis, and St. Barbres in all of Brooklyn. In addition to his pastoral work, Father Vasalodhi brings a deep appreciation for arts to his ministry as a graduate of Julia's Arts of Music. His musical background enriches the worship experience and inspires a vibrant sense of community within his parish. Father, we are truly grateful to have you here today to share your wisdom and lead us in reflection. Thank you for your continued service and for being a guide and light in our community. Thank you for joining us, Father.
Thank you. We will now also ask Councilmember Joseph for the adoption of minutes.
I make a motion that the minutes of the stated meeting of February 27, 2025, and March 12, 2025, be adopted as printed.
Messages and papers from the mayor?
None.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices?
M117, planning commission appointment?
Rules, privileges, and elections. Petitions and communications?
None.
Land use call-ups?
M118.
Thank you. I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on today's land use call-ups.
Abreu.
Aye.
Aviles. Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye.
Botcher.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Brewer.
Yes.
Brooks Powers. Caban. Okay, thank you. Caban.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Aye.
Feliz.
Aye.
Thank you. Gennaro.
Aye.
Thank you. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Thank you. Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks.
Aye.
Holden.
Aye.
Hudson.
Aye.
Joseph.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Mar Marado.
Aye.
Marte.
Aye.
Mealy. Menon.
Aye.
Moya.
I vote aye.
Narcisse.
Aye.
Nurse. Jose.
Aye.
Palladino.
Aye.
Powers. Wrestler.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Rivera.
I vote aye.
Salam.
I vote aye.
Salamanca.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Sanchez.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Schulman.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Thank you. Ung.
Aye.
Vernikoff.
Aye.
Williams.
I vote aye.
One.
Aye.
Zueng.
Aye.
Ariola.
I vote aye.
Farias.
I vote aye.
Speaker Adams.
Aye.
Councilmember Aviles, land use call-ups.
I vote aye.
Thank you.
We will now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams. Thank you very much, Madam Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. I want to start by discussing a serious potential threat by the Trump administration that will harm our city and New Yorkers. The federal budget cuts targeting FEMA could directly impact New York City Emergency Management, a city agency that relies on nearly $110 million in federal grants. If that funding is pulled, NISAM could lose as many as which represents two-thirds of the agency's workforce. This would be devastating for the workers and their families, and it would make our city less safe, less prepared for extreme weather, and less prepared for health emergencies. We rely on their expertise during moments of crisis, and without them, New Yorkers are left in a vulnerable position. The Trump administration is threatening to pull federal funding from the MTA at a time when our public transit system can least afford it. Let's be clear about what that will mean. It will mean more delays, fewer police officers, and a less safe transit system for millions of riders. As I have said before, none of this is helping working families. Instead, Trump is tearing things down, undermining safety in our city, and destabilizing our economy. He and Elon Musk continue to use any excuse they can to divert funding from the services that support working families to advance tax cuts for the wealthiest 1% in the country. I will not be silent in the face of attacks on New York City and working people. We must stand up to defend our city, defend its people, and defend our values. Over the last few weeks, our city lost several New Yorkers whose lives were cut short while on the job. We mourn the passing of Mama Do Barry, a 63-year-old Uber driver, Vladimir Cruz, a 39-year-old construction worker, Johansson Chapman, a 25-year-old Dollar Van driver, and Anton Albert, a 30-year-old bouncer. My thoughts, our thoughts, are with their loved ones during this difficult time. Throughout the month of March, the council has hosted preliminary budget hearings to examine agency budgets and the funding needed to support New Yorkers. The last set of hearings concluded on Tuesday, and I want to thank all of you for your continued leadership in these hearings, as well as our Finance Division for their hard work. I also want to thank the members of the public for adding their voices and thoughts to this important, ongoing conversation. As we continue the budget process for fiscal year 2026, I encourage everyone to continue to stay engaged and provide your critical input. March 23 was Pakistan Day, which commemorates the adoption of the Lahore Resolution that led to the formation of the Nation of Pakistan. I join all Pakistani New Yorkers who celebrate this day of freedom and independence. Yesterday was Greek Independence Day, and we join our city's vibrant Greek communities in observance of this important celebration. Today is Bangladesh Independence Day, and the council will host a Bangladesh Independence Day celebration right here in council chambers, starting at 5:00 p.m. I invite all New Yorkers to join us. The evening of Saturday, March 29, will be the start of Eid Al-Fitr, which marks the end of the blessed month of Ramadan, to the nearly 1 million Muslim New Yorkers who make our diverse city stronger, Eid Mubarak. We will also host an Eid celebration on Tuesday, April 1, starting at 5:30 p.m. To mark the end of Women's History Month, the council will host its annual Women's History Month celebration right here in the People's House on Monday, March 31. We hope to see you all then. On Saturday, March 29, the council will kick off participatory budgeting vote week. Through Sunday, April 6, New Yorkers over the age of 11 can vote for their favorite proposals to be considered for city funding. I'm excited to see all of the projects that New Yorkers created to improve their local park, school, library, or other public spaces. On a personal note, proud to have been a PB supporter since my very first year in office in 2017. Through participatory budgeting, we've allocated nearly $5.5 million for dozens of projects in my own district, while also encouraging more residents to be civically engaged and involved in their community. Thank you to all of the council staff who worked on participatory budgeting and every New Yorker who has engaged in this process. I encourage everyone to vote during PB Vote Week. Next, please join me in wishing a happy belated birthday to Councilmembers Chio Sean Lincoln Wrestler and a happy early birthday to Councilmember Nantasha Williams. I hope you all have had and do have a wonderful celebration. Finally, please join me in honoring Ms. Phyllis Henderson. We recognize her 20 years of public service with the New York City Council and retirement at the end of this month. I know. Ms. Henderson, whom we affectionately call Ms. Phyllis, has been a member of the council's central staff since 2005, serving under five city council speakers, but I'm her favorite. She's been a constant source of kindness and support for all who have worked here. Join me once again, colleagues and friends, for a round of applause for our own Ms. Phyllis, who's in chambers with us today. No, she's not No, she's not on the following land use items. H&amp;H Operating Agreement will approve the transfer of eight city-owned properties to the New York City Health and Hospitals Corporation. The properties are located in Deputy Speaker Ayala and Councilmembers Marte, Dinowitz, Stevens, Hudson, Jose, and Banks. 581 Grant Avenue Development, an HPD application to facilitate the development of a new seven-story affordable housing building on a city-owned parking lot adjacent to the Grant Avenue A-Train Station in Councilmember Nurse's district. These applications involve a rezoning, zoning text amendment, and UDAP designation. The proposed development will include 213 affordable rental units to be developed under the extremely low and low-income affordability term sheet. The council is modifying the application by removing MIH Option 2 and adding MIH Option 3 for deep affordability. 123-12 Sutphen Boulevard rezoning will facilitate the development of a five-story building with residential and community facility uses in my district. The resulting development will have 111 residential units, approximately 28 of which will be affordable under MIH Option 3 for deep affordability. The project is a collaboration between the Full Gospel Mission Church of God and Christ and SR Equities, and includes 10,000 square feet of community facility space, including a new sanctuary for the church. The building will feature a rooftop recreation space, and the development team plans to collaborate with students and teachers at PS 223Q to create public artwork facing the school. 547-C Primary School Facility, an acquisition by the New York City School Construction Authority of four privately-owned lots as a proposed site for a new school in Majority Leader Farias's district. Brook 156 will amend an HPD project to permit commercial or community facility uses within a previously-approved multifamily building in Councilmember Salamanca's district. West 128, 129, an HPD application to facilitate the preservation and rehabilitation of four city-owned buildings with 96 affordable homeownership units under the ANCP program with designation of an urban development action area project in Councilmember Salam's district. Next, we will vote on the following finance items. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brandon, establishing a new 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for three lots in Councilmember Abreu's district. A pre-considered resolution, also sponsored by Councilmember Brandon, establishing a new 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for one lot in Councilmember Hudson's district. And a pre-considered resolution sponsored by Deputy Speaker Diana Ayala regarding the establishment of the East Harlem 125th Street Business Improvement District in Manhattan and setting the date, time, and place for a public hearing on its establishment. Today, we will also vote on the following pieces of legislation. Resolution 792, sponsored by Councilmember Tiffany Caban and Majority Leader Amanda Farias, declares March 25 as Greek Cultural Appreciation and Independence Day annually in the city of New York. Resolution 720A, sponsored by Councilmember Carolina Rivera, calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign A50S1077, known as the New York City Art Space Act, to promote the development of affordable art spaces in New York City. Thank you to our staff member Regina Paul. Resolution 721A, sponsored by Councilmember Lynn Schulman, calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign S1804A128, legislation that would eliminate deductibles, copayment, coinsurance, or any other cost-sharing requirements for asthma inhalers. Resolution 722A, also sponsored by Councilmember Schulman, calls upon the United States Congress to reintroduce and pass, and the president to sign HR 2665, the Supporting Safety Net Hospitals Act, to delay Medicaid disproportionate share hospital payment reductions until fiscal year 2026. Thank you to our staff member Josh Newman. Resolution 414A, sponsored by Councilmember Sandy Nurse, calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign S4795A5959, requiring at least one member of the State Board of Parole to be a formerly incarcerated person. Resolution 415A, sponsored by public advocate Jumani Williams, calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign S206A1432A, which would remove the lifetime ban on jury duty for convicted felons and postpone jury service for any person currently incarcerated for a felony. Resolution 417A, sponsored by Councilmember Kevin Riley, calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign S4812A5269A, which would allow for the return of fines, restitution, and reparation payments where there was an unjust conviction in a timely manner. We thank our staff member Chad Benjamin. Resolution 730, sponsored by Councilmember Chris Banks, calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation to conduct a thorough study on the RADPACT program to assess the effects of conversion on residents and the program's impacts on tenants' rights, security, and community well-being. Resolution 731, also sponsored by Councilmember Banks, calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation to implement a more robust resident engagement and voting process at each NYCHA development that is considering RADPACT conversion. Thank you to our staff member Charles Kim. Resolution 119A, sponsored by Councilmember Crystal Hudson, calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign A1621S4098 in relation to prohibiting property owners from filing eviction proceedings for tenants who reside in buildings with substantial pending housing maintenance code violations. Thank you to our staff members Charles Kim, Andrew Born, and Dirk Spencer. Resolution 246A, also sponsored by Councilmember Nurse, calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation requiring unlawful eviction cases to be heard within five days. Legislation 524A, sponsored by Councilmember Kevin Riley, would call on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign S126 in relation to legal representation in certain mortgage foreclosure actions. Thank you to our staff members Jose Conde, Andrew Born, and Dirk Spencer. Next, we will vote on a pair of bills to expand services for people living with HIV. Resolution 175A, sponsored by Councilmember Chio Se, calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign S442A3355, which would amend the social services law to mandate each local Department of Social Service to link persons living with HIV with benefits and services. It would provide that persons living with HIV, who are receiving housing assistance, shall not be required to pay more than 30% of household income towards shelter costs. Introduction 1194A, sponsored by Councilmember Lynn Schulman, would codify the eligibility of HIV aid services to include any person living with HIV. Thank you to our staff members Nina Rosenberg and Sahira Mozami. Next, Introduction 1047B, sponsored by Councilmember Shawna Abreu, would require the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene or other agency designated by the mayor to establish a three-year pilot program that provides access to sleep apnea screenings at no cost, as well as access to home sleep apnea tests if deemed appropriate. This bill would also require DOHMH to prioritize individuals without insurance. Thank you to our staff member Sarah Suter. Finally, we will vote on a package of legislation to reform the rules governing sidewalk sheds. For too long, the dull green scaffolding that towers over miles of our city sidewalks have been a fixture in our streetscape. These structures are not just eyesores that cover up buildings, they're also a blight that impacts our public safety. Today's legislation reforms are way long overdue, and I'm proud that under this council, we are finally taking action to address these challenges. Introduction 661A, sponsored by Councilmember Eric Botcher, strengthens enforcement of facade repairs by introducing penalties for failure to submit construction documents to the Department of Buildings, file necessary permit applications, and complete repairs. Introduction 660A, also sponsored by Councilmember Botcher, would double the required level of lighting under sidewalk sheds from 45 lumens per watt or greater to 90 lumens per watt or greater. It would require that lighting under sidewalk sheds be LED lights. Introduction 394A, sponsored by Councilmember Keith Powers, would require DOB to complete a study and review the frequency of the facade inspection and safety program and recommend changes to the council by December 31, 2025. This bill would also extend the inspection cycle from every five years to a longer interval time between six to 12 years. Introduction 393A, also sponsored by Councilmember Powers, would reduce the duration of sidewalk shed permits for facade repairs from one year to three months, unless they're connected to demolition, a building alteration, or new building construction. This bill would also create new penalties for property owners who delay necessary repairs for sidewalk sheds occupying the public right of way. Finally, Introduction 391A, sponsored by Councilmember Powers, would require DOB to complete a study and recommend new sidewalk shed designs by September 30, 2025. This bill would also allow more color options for sheds, require corresponding construction fences to match the color of the sidewalk shed, increase lighting beneath sidewalk sheds, and raise the minimum height of sidewalk sheds to 12 feet, except in areas where exits, light, or ventilation would be obstructed. We thank our staff members Austin Malone, Andrew Born, Dirk Spencer, and Elliot Heisler. And we also thank former Deputy Mayor Mara Joshi for her partnership on this great package of bills. Thank you, colleagues, for your attention. I turn it back over to our Majority Leader. Thank you, Speaker Adams. We will now move into discussion of general orders, and I'd like to recognize Councilmember Powers first, then Botcher and Schulman.
Thank you, and good afternoon to everyone. I am excited to say what we all know to be now true, that New York is going to shed the sheds once and for all and get rid of the ugly green scaffolding that has become a permanent fixture of New York City streets. You can definitely applaud for that. We're not supposed to applaud. We'll applaud. We know, as New Yorkers, that these sidewalk sheds are important to keeping New Yorkers safe. safe when construction's going on or facade inspections are going on, but more often than not, work slows, repairs drag on, and scaffolding is left for months or even years and even decades on our streets. Over 1,000 sidewalk sheds today have been up over three years, each one becoming a seemingly permanent blight on our landscape and a permanent fixture inside the neighborhoods. What does that really mean for New Yorkers? That means a small business that's buried under the scaffold and no longer can be visible to the foot traffic on the street. People walking through those alleyways that are dark and dimly lit, that become a public safety hazard. For property owners, people have to put them up, they're costly, and they seem to never end. For people in our public housing or campus types of housing, it means our entire neighborhoods are covered in scaffolding, meaning they're unsafe. And for New Yorkers, it means we don't even get to look at the beautiful city that we live in. For people that are visiting, they don't get to enjoy the beautiful skylines and the architecture of New York City. Today, we put an end to that. We're doing a package of bills alongside my friend, Councilmember Eric Botcher, that would reform this process to, number one, update the design standards, to put bright lighting under them, to allow for new colors, not just the ugly green, and to allow for higher heights, so we don't have to feel so claustrophobic when we're underneath them. When they go up, we want to make sure they get down, so we're finally accelerating the timeline for when they go up and making sure that people that put them up are actually doing the work, so they don't stay up for decades. And for folks who are facing the burden every five years of having to do the inspections and the work, we're now going to do a more nuanced approach, not the one-size-fits-all approach that has long plagued our city, and to give new buildings, give buildings of different types a different timeline than just the five years. I want to acknowledge a whole host of people that are here with us today, but I do want to acknowledge that the Local Law 11 and the predecessor to it, Local Law 10, originate from an accident that happened of a young New Yorker named Grace Gold, a student at Barnard, who in 1979 was hit and tragically lost her life as a result of a facade that was in need of repair. We are joined here today by her sister, who joined us in these efforts to make sure we could maintain the safety while also modernizing this laws, and she's here with us today. I want to welcome her and thank her for her partnership. And of course, thank our member.
Councilmember, your time has expired.
I just want to acknowledge the staff who worked on this, and I will be done. I want to just acknowledge Brad Reed and Austin Malone and Audrey Sun, my staff Haley, Ben, and Emma, who all worked on this, and I encourage you all to vote aye. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Botcher, followed by Schulman, then Abreu.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I have two bills in today's package. One would establish time limits for property owners to file for permits to do the work on their facilities. Another would establish time limits for doing the work. I have another bill that would increase the lighting requirements under scaffolding. So I thought before today that everyone knew that gay men hated overhead lighting. It's 100% true. The one exception, I would say, is sidewalk scaffolding. If you invite me to your house, I will turn off your overhead lighting and turn on all the lamps. But scaffolding is different. Our legislation will increase the lighting requirements, it'll require LED lighting. The lighting technology has changed since we put light bulbs under scaffolding. We have LED light strips, brighter, safer, more energy-efficient. So proud to be part of this package of legislation. Really want to thank Speaker Adams for her leadership, Keith Powers for his leadership, and all the staff who worked on this important package of legislation.
Recognizing Councilmember Schulman, followed by Abreu, then Brewer. Councilmember Schulman?
Good afternoon, everyone. Today, the council is taking a historic step to ensure that every New Yorker living with HIV has access to the vital support and services they need. That's why I'm asking all of my colleagues to please vote yes on Introduction 1194A. By expanding eligibility for the HIV AIDS Services Administration, we are breaking down outdated barriers and aligning our policies with the reality of modern HIV care, because early intervention and comprehensive support save lives. For too long, many people living with HIV have been denied the housing, nutrition, and case management services that can make the difference between stability and crisis. This legislation is about dignity, equity, and our ongoing commitment to ending the HIV epidemic in New York City. I want to thank Speaker Adrian Adams for her leadership, Deputy Speaker in General Welfare Chair Diana Ayala, my colleagues in the council for their support, and the tireless advocates who have fought for this change. Together, we are making New York City a place where no one is left behind. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Abreu, followed by Brewer.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, as we pass Intro 1047, we're taking a step forward for public health, especially for New Yorkers who have gone for far too long without answers about their fatigue, their concentration issues, and their heart health. This bill will help identify sleep apnea early, particularly in communities that are often overlooked when it comes to preventative care. It directs the Department of Health and Mental Health and Hygiene to launch an outreach campaign and offer free screening and treatment, so that more New Yorkers can get tested and finally get a good night's sleep. No one wants their bus driver or their child's schoolteacher to be battling fatigue while they're doing their jobs, yet we have taken almost no steps as a city to promote the better health. That ends today. I want to thank my colleagues for supporting this legislation, particularly Chair Schulman and Speaker Adams. I also thank Committee Counsel Sarah Suter and my Deputy Chief of Staff Jalisa Quigley. I look forward to seeing the impact it will have on well-being across our city. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you very much. I certainly will be voting for the scaffolding, but I want to mention one thing, because a lot of the co-ops have contacted me, actually just yesterday and today, which is on 393, if we are talking about within every 90 days to produce a report, it's going to include the engineer's report, the architect's report, the sign-offs, the filing of signatures, and I guess a fee. But the fee will be more than the usual $1.35 per year, because you have to pay the architect and the engineer and so on every 90 days. And I'm not sure that DOB is going to read these reports coming in every 90 days. So what I'm saying is, hopefully, in the rulemaking, Commissioner Otto can take a look at this and see if there's a longer time period. I know that Chair Powers has figured out how to have more grace period and figure out hardships, so maybe every co-op should say, "I have a hardship," and that would end the problem. But I would like to say that DOB needs to look at this carefully and figure out a way that they are not, particularly some of the co-ops, paying every 90 days for all of these services, that then are going to end up having a higher fee and more time involved, because that's not the purpose. The purpose is to get the scaffolding down. Thank you very much.
Seeing no one else signed up to speak. Report of special committees?
None.
Reports of standing committees?
Report of the Committee on Finance, pre-considered Reso 813, East Harlem bid.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered Reso 815, transparency resolution.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered LU's 254 and Reso 824 and 255 and Reso 825, tax exemptions.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on General Welfare, Intro 1194A, services for people with HIV AIDS.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Health, Intro 1047B, sleep apnea pilot program.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Housing and Buildings, Intros 391A through 661A on Page 3, sidewalk sheds and wall inspections.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU's 234 through 236, 581 Grant Avenue Development.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section 197 of the New York City Charter.
LU, excuse me, LU 238 and Reso 826, H&amp;H Operating Agreement.
Approved with modifications and coupled on general orders.
LU's 239 and 240, 12312 Sutphen Boulevard rezoning.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section 197 of the New York City Charter.
LU 251 and Reso 827, new primary school.
Coupled on general orders.
LU 252 and Reso 828 and 253 and Reso 829, West 128th, 129th Street Cluster.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered LU 256 and Reso 830, Brook 156.
Coupled on general orders.
On the general orders calendar, LU 234 and Reso 831 through LU 240 and Reso 835, applications from City Planning.
Coupled on general orders.
Resolution appointing various persons, Commissioner Deeds.
Coupled on general orders. I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled on today's general orders calendar.
Abreu.
I vote aye.
Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye.
Botcher.
Aye.
Brannin.
Aye.
Brewer.
Yes.
Brooks Powers.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Councilmember.
I vote aye. Congratulations to Councilmembers Powers and Botcher.
Thank you, Councilmember Brooks Powers. Caban.
Aye on all.
Thank you, Councilmember Caban. Carr.
Aye on all.
De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Aye.
Felice.
Aye.
Thank you. Gennaro.
I vote aye.
Thank you, Councilmember. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Thank you. Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks.
I vote aye.
Holden.
Aye.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye on all.
Lewis.
Aye.
Mamorato.
I vote aye on all.
Marte.
Aye on all.
Mealy.
Aye.
Menon.
Aye.
Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Narcisse.
Permission to expand my vote?
Permission granted.
There's a lot of going on around me in the Shipset Bay area. I have over 1,000 people.
Councilmember, is this about resolutions?
Came out for the LU's. I'm going to get to LU's. The LU's, I'm going to abstain, because there is a bidding and switch that's going on. It should stop, and I'm not going any further on that one, and that's the reason I have to say no to that and yes to all.
Councilwoman Narcisse, can you specify?
No to LU's.
Entire LU's?
Yes.
Thank you.
And ayes for the rest.
Thank you. Osay.
Aye on all.
Palladino.
Aye on all.
Wrestler. Aye. You know, and this is a great package, so congratulations to the bill sponsors. My constituents will be very, very happy. Thank you. Riley.
Aye.
Rivera.
Congrats to my colleagues. I vote aye.
Salam.
I vote aye on all.
Salamanca.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Sanchez.
Huge congratulations to my colleagues.
Thank you, Councilmember. Schulman.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Thank you. Ong.
Aye.
Vernikov.
Aye.
Williams.
I vote aye, and as a person who was recently diagnosed with sleep apnea, I'm particularly really excited about that, but also excited about the other bills. Thank you.
One.
Aye.
Juang.
Aye.
Areola.
Aye on all.
Farias.
I vote aye on all.
Speaker Adams.
I vote aye, especially to the LU that's in my own district. Really happy for Community Board 12. Aye on all.
All items on today's general order calendar are adopted by a vote of 49 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 abstentions, with the exception of all land use items, which were adopted by a vote of 48 in the affirmative, 1 in the negative, and 0 abstentions. Introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to committee as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you. We'll now move into discussion of resolutions, and I'd first like to recognize Councilmember Banks, followed by Nurse, then Caban.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader, and good afternoon to my colleagues. Today, we are voting on two resolutions crucial to defending the rights and voices of public housing residents. Resolutions 730 and Resolution 731 directly addresses the biggest concerns raised by NYCHA residents about the RAD PAC program, concerns that have existed for years now. As many of you are aware, the RAD PAC program was intended to address the deteriorating conditions in our public housing developments. However, for far too many residents, it has resulted in rising rents, inadequate repairs, and in so many cases, serious threats to their safety and stability. We cannot allow this to continue. These resolutions are a direct response to the tireless advocacy of NYCHA residents and tenant organizations who have long fought for greater protections and more transparent process. We owe it to them and to all the public housing residents to act now and ensure that their voices are respected. I encourage all my colleagues to vote yes on these resolutions, and it is time to take a proactive step towards making our public housing system more accountable, more equitable, and more responsive to the needs of the people it serves. Thank you, and thank you to the staff.
Recognizing Councilmember Nurse, followed by Caban, then Riley.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I have two Resos, 246 and 414A. 246 is calling on the state to essentially provide the right to have the people who have unlawfully been evicted to have their case heard within five days. Right now, the judges have the discretion to hear it or not, and we want to make this a right for legal occupants, so that we are helping people to not be essentially rendered homeless. And Reso 414A is calling on the state to pass S 3746, a bill that would require at least one member of the State Board of Parole to be a formerly incarcerated person. Years of reporting has shown and exposed the disparities within our state's parole system, and formerly incarcerated individuals know intimately what it takes to rebuild a life after navigating the carceral system and reintegrate into our communities. Their voices and experiences are invaluable and should be guiding these decisions, so I ask for your support on this, colleagues. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Caban, followed by Riley, then Hudson.
Thank you. Today, I am proud to be passing a resolution alongside Majority Leader Amanda Farias, declaring March 25th Greek Cultural Appreciation and Independence Day. This resolution honors Greece's fight for independence and the enormous impact Greek immigrants and Greek Americans have had on our city. Since the turn of the 20th century, many thousands of Greek immigrants have made their way to New York City, and a significant number of them have found a home in the heart of my district, Astoria, Queens. Today, about 70,000 Greek New Yorkers are irreplaceable members of our city. March 25th is the day on which the Greek people celebrate the Greek Revolution of 1821 and greet each other by saying, "Kronya Pola," which means "Live Many Years." Thank you to our community partners, including the Greek Cultural Center, HANIC, the Hellenic Film Society, and Xena Productions. Today, we recognize the Greek community in my district, the deep bond between Greece and the United States, and the social and cultural contributions of Greek Americans in New York City. May they live many years. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Riley, followed by Hudson, then Rivera.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I introduce, I'm going to be passing two resolutions. If passed, these resolutions will address critical issues protecting homeowners from foreclosures and ensuring those wrongfully convicted are not further burdened by the criminal justice system. Reso 524A calls on the New York State Legislature to pass Bill S 126, sponsored by Senator Leroy Comrie, ensuring homeowners facing foreclosures have the right to legal counsel if they cannot afford it. Reso 417A urges the state legislature to pass Bill A 4246, sponsored by Assembly Member Brian Cunningham, mandating the timely return of fines, restitution, and reparations to individuals whose wrongful convictions have been overturned. These resolutions make sure that wrongfully convicted individuals are not further punished by financial consequences, and our foreclosures have risen in New York City, leaving families, especially in underserved communities, vulnerable without legal help. I want to thank my cosponsored colleagues and the advocates for their partnerships and champion these resolutions. Thank you, Majority Leader.
Recognizing Councilmember Hudson, followed by Rivera.
Thank you, Majority Leader. 34% of New York City tenants spend at least half of their income on rent. The staggering cost of living has forced millions to choose between housing and other essential needs, and when individuals dedicate such a significant portion of their income to rent, they deserve livable housing conditions in return. Yet every day, my office and those of my colleagues across the city are inundated with cases of landlords failing to fulfill necessary housing repairs. In New York-
In New York City, although tenants have the right to withhold rent until their apartments meet livable standards, those simply exercising their rights often face eviction as retaliation from their landlords. As a body, we must continue our work to mitigate soaring housing costs and alleviate the burden placed on nearly all New Yorkers. That's why I'm proud that today we're voting on Resolution 119, calling on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign, A 1621 S 4098, prohibiting property owners from filing eviction proceedings against tenants living in buildings with substantial unresolved housing maintenance violations. By passing this resolution, we're sending a clear message to our colleagues at the state level and to all New Yorkers that the right to safe and stable housing must be prioritized. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you. Today, we're voting on Resolution Number 720, expressing the council's support for the state legislature's New York City Arts Space Act. The bill proposes to extend property tax benefits to building owners and developers for the creation of long-term affordable artist workspaces in commercial buildings being converted for residential use. It's just one way we can increase access to affordable studios, rehearsal and performance spaces, as well as cultural programming open to the public. It's also an investment that will pay off many times over, preserves community heritage, and helps stabilize the foundation of our creative economy, a sector that generates 13% of the city's economic activity. And I've heard loud and clear from organizations and workers that rising rents and financial instability are among their most pressing challenges. The New York City Arts Space Act would help bolster one of our greatest assets and ensure that New York can remain a place where artists can thrive. I hope I can count on your support for Resolution 720. Thank you.
Seeing no one else signed up to speak, we will now have a voice vote on today's resolutions. If you wish to vote against or abstain from any of today's resolutions, please notify the Legislative Documents Unit by email or by approaching the dais. I'll now read today's resolutions into the record. Resolution 119A calls on the New York State to enact Assembly Bill 1621 and Senate Bill 4098 in relation to prohibiting property owners from filing eviction proceedings for tenants who reside in buildings with substantial pending housing maintenance code violations. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 175A calls on New York State to enact Senate Bills 442 and Assembly Bill 3355, which would amend the Social Services law to mandate each local department of social service-linked persons living with HIV with benefits and services, and provide that persons living with HIV who are receiving housing assistance shall not be required to pay more than 30% of household income toward shelter costs. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 246A calls on the New York State to enact legislation requiring unlawful eviction cases to be heard within five days. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 414A calls on New York State to enact Senate Bill 3746, requiring at least one member of the state board of parole be a formerly incarcerated person. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 415A calls on New York State to enact Senate Bill 2240 and Assembly Bill 5414, which would remove the lifetime ban on jury duty for convicted felons and postpone jury service for any person currently incarcerated for a felony. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 417A calls on New York State to enact Assembly Bill Number 4246 in relation to the return of fines, restitution, and reparation payments where there was an unjust conviction in a timely manner. All those in favor, say aye. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 524A calls on New York State to enact Senate Bill Number 126 in relation to legal representation in certain mortgage foreclosure actions. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Listen, I'm trying to keep you guys awake, I gotta read all these. Resolution 728 calls on the New York State to enact Assembly Bill Number 50 and Senate Bill Number 1077, known as the New York City Arts Space Act, to promote the development of affordable art spaces in New York City. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 721A calls on the New York State to enact Senate Bill Number 1804 and Assembly Bill Number 128, legislation that would eliminate deductibles, copayment, coinsurance, or any other cost-sharing requirements for asthma inhalers. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 722A calls on the U.S. Congress to reintroduce and pass and the president to sign HR 2665, the Supporting Safety Net Hospitals Act, to delay Medicaid disproportionate share hospital payment reductions until fiscal year 2026. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 730A calls on the New York State to enact legislation to conduct a thorough study on the RAD PAC program to assess the effects of conversion on residents and the program's impacts on tenants' rights, security, and community well-being. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 731 calls on the New York State to enact legislation to implement a more robust resident engagement and voting process at each NYCHA development, considering RAD PAC conversion. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. And lastly, Resolution 792 declares March 25th as Greek Cultural Appreciation and Independence Day annually to honor both the perseverance of the Greek people in their own fight for freedom and their integral place in the culture and history of the city of New York. Will all those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We will now move into general discussion, and I'd like to first recognize Councilmember Caban, followed by Carr, then Banks.
Thank you very much, Majority Leader. I am proud to be introducing a resolution alongside the entire LGBTQIA+ Caucus and Councilmember Farah Lewis today, expressing the council's support for protecting gender-affirming care. Together, we are calling upon the New York State Legislature to provide the funds to ensure hospital and healthcare provider services for gender-affirming care remain accessible for all people in New York City. Gender-affirming care is lifesaving care, and Trump's attempts to ban gender-affirming care are cruel and discriminatory. Those who do not learn history are doomed to repeat it. Before 1933, Germany was at a center of LGBT plus community and culture, but Hitler's Nazi government brutally targeted the trans community. They claimed to protect German youth by deporting trans people to concentration camps and burning the library of the Institute for Sexual Research, which was founded by Jewish doctor Magnus Hirschfeld. Here at the LGBTQIA+ Caucus and in the New York City Council, we will always support the transgender community. We will not back down because the Trump administration wants to set them up as scapegoats. We will not let members of our community be villainized and demonized for who they are, and we will always defend our transgender and gender nonconforming neighbors and their right to healthcare. So, thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Carr, followed by Banks, then Schulman.
Thank you. I want to begin by thanking my colleague, Councilmember Bacher, for finally explaining to me why I have an irrational hatred all my life of my father leaving the overhead lights on in the house. But with that said, I'd like to call everyone's attention to Introduction 1220, which I'm introducing alongside Councilmembers Juan, Wrestler, and Brewer, the chairs of our committees on contracts, governmental operations, and oversight and investigations. We have many agencies and elected official offices that put out branded materials, mugs, calendars, bags, all sorts of swag to the public, some of which can be instructive and helpful, and some of which comes down to campaigning. And we're asking that these agencies and offices be held to account and report to the council and others about those expenditures for branded materials. So I call on all colleagues who, in the interest of transparency, would want this information to sign on to Introduction 1220. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Banks, followed by Schulman, then Lewis.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Colleagues, today, I am outraged by the findings of the latest D O Y investigation, which exposes serious failures in security and fire safety at NYCHA buildings throughout the city. The report shows that NYCHA's lack of oversight has put public housing residents, including our vulnerable seniors, at incredible risk. Security guards have abandoned their posts, failed to show up for their shifts, and falsified time sheets. Thirty-two percent of the lobby doors were unsecured, and 70% of the CCTV cameras in senior housings were inoperable. These are basic security measures that are absolutely failing, and it is beyond unacceptable. The fire safety failures are no better. Fire guards were also absent and falsified their time sheets, leaving residents at risk in buildings with deficient fire safety features. Three fires occurred in NYCHA buildings where fire guards were absent, resulting in resident injury. And let me be clear, this is neglect and a direct endangerment of public housing residents at the hands of NYCHA and allied. This council fought hard to restore the $6.8 million budget protecting the security guard program at NYCHA senior developments, and yet, NYCHA and its vendor, Allied Universal, are wasting that money. They are billing for services that are not being provided and leaving our residents, especially our seniors, vulnerable. This is not only a betrayal of our residents' safety, but a waste of funds that we fought to secure. As chair of the Public Housing Committee, I will not stand by and let NYCHA continue to neglect its responsibility. The lack of accountability and oversight is disgraceful. If NYCHA and its vendor cannot meet the most basic safety standards, then they must be held accountable, and new vendor that meets and exceeds expectations must be found. Our residents deserve a better, and we will not tolerate them being ignored and left vulnerable. It's time for NYCHA to take responsibility and fix these failures and ensure that safety...
Councilmember, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Schulman, followed by Lewis, then Menon.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I am asking folks to sign on to... Today, I'm introducing Resolution 822, calling on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign, S 705 and A 2140, which is the Fair Pricing Act. This would cap the amount people pay for non-complicated routine medical procedures at 150% of the cost paid by Medicare for those same services. This legislation actually complements the Healthcare Accountability Act passed by the council last year, and will help bring down the cost of healthcare overall for all New Yorkers. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Lewis, followed by Menon, then Narcisse.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Today, I'm proud to introduce Intro 1224, legislation to address the digital divide for individuals and families experiencing homelessness in New York City. Intro 1224, a local law to amend the Administrative Code of New York City in relation to requiring shelters to provide free internet access. This bill will mandate that the Department of Social Services and all city agencies that manage shelters in the Five boroughs to provide free, high-speed internet access and computers for residents. In today's world, internet access is no longer a luxury, it's essential. From job applications and education to healthcare and other vital resources, the internet is key to rebuilding lives and unlocking opportunities for those facing hardship. Yet many of our shelters still lack the basic resource, leaving individuals isolated from opportunities that can help them get back on their feet. Homelessness is already daunting and isolating experience. We cannot allow a lack of internet access to make it even harder for those in temporary housing to connect with the resources they need most. I encourage my colleagues to sign on to Intro 1224 to ensure that all New Yorkers have an opportunity to regain stability. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Menon, followed by Narcisse, then Hanks.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I'm introducing Intro 1225, that will create a permanent office of the census. New York is currently projected to lose two congressional seats after the 2030 census. This would mean fewer voices in Congress to push for our city's priorities and fewer funds for our communities. I previously served as the 2020 Census Director, and in that effort, we had to, in essence, create a new agency out of whole cloth. We were able to work with over 150 community groups on the ground who were their trusted voices in their communities and do over 34 media campaigns in 27 different languages. I'm proud to say that New York City finished first of all major cities across the country in the census, meaning that we are currently receiving an extra $1.8 billion per year in federal funds to New York City over the next decade, that is going to over 200 vital social service programs. In addition, every decade since 1950, New York State has lost a minimum of two congressional seats. In some decades, we lost three, sometimes four, sometimes five seats, never less than two, except for in 2020, where we lost only one seat, and we came, as most people know, within 89 people of losing zero congressional seats. That is why it is so important that we start now on preparing for the 2030 census. My bill mandates that the mayor create an office of the census and appoints a director two and a half years before any federal census. I want to thank the council members that have signed on to this bill, and I want to invite everyone to join me on April 1st, where I am proud to co-host a conference with the Central Labor Council on preparing for the 2030 census. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Narcisse, followed by Hanks, then Nurse.
Thank you, Madam Majority, and thank you, Madam Speaker. And by the way, for the amazing work that you've been doing, keeping, like I said, we don't have no drama in the council. Your leadership matters, and I want to say thank you to that. And I want to say thank you to all my colleagues when I make the call to see how I can get support of what's going on, and for all of you that helped me out, that talked to me, and it takes the village, and you were there for me. I would not be sitting well not saying thank you to all of you. Over 28 of my colleagues that have supported me for this, what I'm going through. There is a bid and switch in 2134 Coral Street. I still have people sleeping outside for the past few weeks, and I know we're gonna resolve it, because last night, I had a sea of people in front of me, and I know they're watching to wondering what's gonna happen. I had to be escorted out of the meeting because all the Community Board 15 was concerned about me and my life. So, having said that, it was a pleasure for me to serve here, and I know we're not gonna have any drama in this side of the part of City Hall, and then we will come with a solution, because there is no reason to have a bid and switch after we talk about anything in here. So, thank you, Madam Speaker, for being the leader that you are, and thank you, Madam Majority.
Recognizing Councilmember Hanks, followed by Nurse, then Wrestler.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Today, I introduce a Resolution 819 that will save lives, one that builds on the Dominic Murray Sudden Cardiac Arrest Prevention Act by ensuring that all public school students receive an echocardiogram before entering high school. The sudden cardiac arrest is a leading cause of death among young athletes in the United States, with one young person lost every three days during the school year. Many of these tragedies could be prevented with early detection. This resolution is deeply personal to Staten Island, as Frank and Fran Rialy has turned an imaginable heartbreak in the loss of their son, Frank Jr., into a mission to prevent other families from experiencing the same tragedies. Through their foundation, they provide free echocardiograms for all high school athletes on Staten Island, and their work has already changed lives by staggering 11% of the students that receive the screening have an issue. So, right now, our schools require physical exams, but they don't require an echocardiogram, one of the most effective tools to detecting heart abnormalities. And this resolution calls on the state legislator and the governor to take action, because no family should lose a child due to an undiagnosed heart condition. I urge my colleagues to sign on and support this critical lifesaving measure, and let's make sure that every student, not just lucky enough to receive voluntary screening, but has access to this essential test. Additionally, I'm introducing 1222. This legislation will ensure transparency and communication of the installation of energy storage systems in our neighborhoods. These systems are critical to our clean energy future and are being installed in residential areas without adequate notification to local residents or community leaders. This lack of transparency has created concerns, and it's time we take action. Thank you so much. And sign on.
Recognizing Councilmember Nurse, followed by Wrestler, then Aviles.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I'm introducing Intro 1226, which will improve code enforcement, make housing inspections more efficient, and codify agency practice. Currently, the law requires HPD to schedule inspections for certain violations but not others. They are also not required to reschedule missed inspections, and that really puts the burden on the tenant to file more 311 complaints or call HPD to reschedule. But we can and should make things easier for tenants living in bad conditions. This bill will require HPD to immediately schedule a follow-up inspection when the original inspection attempt was unsuccessful. It would also require HPD to let the tenant know the date and time of the follow-up inspection in writing and text or email. in writing and text or email, as well as send the tenant same-day updates via text or email on the inspector's estimated time of arrival. It shouldn't be easier to track or pick up a missed package than it is to fix something in your apartment. I do want to acknowledge that this bill idea came from my Director of Constituent Services, Vanette Soriana Haro, who inspired the creation of it through her tireless work with District 37 constituents experiencing delayed inspections. And with that, I encourage my colleagues to sign on to this bill. Thank you, Majority Leader.
Recognizing Councilmember Wrestler, followed by Aviles.
Thank you so much, Madam Majority Leader. I firstly just want to thank almost every single one of you for signing on to a letter that Councilmember Stevens and I wrote yesterday to the Governor, the Majority Leader, and the Speaker of the Assembly, calling for more funding for childcare vouchers. I was genuinely shocked to find out 10 days ago that 60,000 children are slated to lose their childcare over the course of the next year without action in the state budget. This is more kids than the entire enrollment of UPK. To say that this would be devastating for families, for low-income families that are struggling to get by, is an understatement. To say that this would be destabilizing for childcare providers in our community is an understatement. I have been shocked, shocked, that Mayor Adams and his team have done absolutely nothing to advocate for these 60,000 vouchers that are about to disappear. They only informed Council Finance two weeks ago. They barely mentioned it up in Albany, and it has not been a priority for the city of New York in their advocacy. So it's time for us to step up. It's time for us to get loud. I'm grateful that we had almost every single elected official representing the city of New York sign on to this letter yesterday, calling for funding in the state budget. We're going to have a rally outside the Governor's Office on Friday at 11:00 with childcare providers. I encourage folks to turn out. This will impact thousands, hundreds if not thousands, of families in every single one of our districts. This will close childcare providers in our community if we do not see action. And I can tell you, this item has not yet come up at the negotiating table in Albany between the state legislative leaders and the Governor. So I really want to encourage every council member to call their assembly members and state senators and say, "We need childcare funding." I encourage you to reach out to your providers in your community and tell them to get loud and get organized, that we need childcare funding. We cannot allow for this devastating cut to happen. We need to make sure that our allies in Albany take action before it's too late. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Aviles.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Wrestler. At our last stated, I recognize the unjust detention of permanent resident Mahmoud Khalil, who was targeted by ICE without due process in retaliation to his participation in a pro-Palestinian protest on Columbia's campus last year. Since then, several other university students, a South Korean student, and today a student from Tufts, permanent residents who have been targeted by DHS and threatened with deportation. This should alarm you. Will your friend be next, your cousin, your uncle? All the while, our tax dollars continue to aid in the destruction and violence in Gaza. It's crucial that this council continues to defend the rights to free speech and due process for everyone. We must also speak out against all forms of violence and promote peace for New Yorkers who fear for their family's safety across the globe. As I have said since the beginning, all life is precious. The hostages, of course, must be returned, and we must stop this bloodshed in Gaza. In the last few days alone, more than 700 people, including children, have been killed. Thousands of Palestinian children have been killed in Maine. If you have an ounce of humanity, how can you agree, or how can you stand it? We need a permanent ceasefire. We need an arms embargo and an end to this genocide. We must demand peace and an end to all violence. Thank you.
Seeing no one else signed up to speak, oh, recognizing Councilmember Botcher.
Sorry. Imagine waiting years for your day in court, whether you're a victim seeking justice, a tenant fighting eviction, or a business trying to resolve a contract dispute. Imagine being stuck in jail for months because the courts don't have the capacity to hear your case. For too many New Yorkers, this isn't a hypothetical, it's reality, and is putting public safety, fairness, and efficiency at risk. That's why today I'm introducing a resolution in support of state legislation that would remove an outdated and arbitrary cap on the number of justices in New York Supreme Court, the trial court of general jurisdiction that hears most civil and criminal cases. This provision in the New York State Constitution dates back to 1846, last updated in 1961, when caseloads were a third of what they are today, and we're now stuck with a rigid cap on the number of Supreme Court justices, one for every 50,000 people in a judicial district. State legislation by Senator Brad Hoyleman Siegel and Assemblymember Alex Boras needs to get passed again this year. It will put it on the ballot in November as a state constitutional amendment. It's critical that we all get behind this in order for justice and fairness to improve in our state.
Thank you. I'll now call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close today's stated meeting.
Thank you, Majority Leader.